Abol, would you be so kind as to consider standing for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of the flag, please?
Dear Lord, we seek blessings on the task before us today. Bless our efforts with clear insight and deliberation with wisdom, and bless our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions to be important. In His name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'm showing nine o'clock with the Henry County Board of Commissioners meeting come to order 9:00 AM Tuesday, November the 4th. For those that forgot, today's election day. Having said that, I would like to recommend to the board that they consider amending the published agenda to add two condemnation for Rhodes. I think one is Georgia III and one is Harris Drive. And we will hear that when I get to the county attorney's comments, if that will be sufficient.
Yes, sir.
So, having said that, if somebody would move to accept the agenda as amended-
I agree with you.
Have a motion District 1-
Second.
Second from District 5. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we'd like to recognize and hear Ms. Jennifer Lotzenheiser, Assistant Director of Public Services at the Library System. So you'll have 15 minutes, and if you would, come to the podium, state your name and address of the records, please.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lotzenheiser, Henry County Libraries at 101-001 Florence McGarrett Boulevard in McDonough. Okay, okay. Chairman and Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to share with you a quick quarterly update on the library and our current status. We'll get caught up. As you know, the library works to contribute to the community through education initiatives, community building, and economic development. So we're here to share just real quick our efforts at that. Over the last quarter, our quarter would be July, September, October. I'm sorry, August, don't forget August. So, the biggest portion of that, of course, is dedicated to summer reading. Our summer reading program addresses all ages, and we had a record boomer year this past year, and that included over 4,000 children and teens enrolled in summer reading. That included 8,000 hours of reading by our kids, and over 27,000 books read, just under 28,000 books. This summer for our summer reading program, we included virtual summer reading, which was very exciting, and it was a pilot program here within the state of Georgia, and is now looking to be implemented at other library systems throughout the state next year. So we're really proud about that. The other thing that we developed this year was adult summer reading, and that is very important because, one, it develops family literacy, which we know parents are the first teachers of our children, and it also improves the functional literacy of our adults, which makes them more employable and makes our community stronger culturally as well. We also have Coder Dojo, which is another pilot program at libraries within the state of Georgia. It's teaching computer coding to our kids ages seven through 17. And that includes computer programming in web development, Minecraft, app inventors, and scratch coding. We've had 82 youth trained in computer programming, completely free of charge. We offer Lego engineering activities. We support GED training through onsite classes and in partnership with Henry County's, Connecting Henry's SWAG program. We also offer adult technology assistance in personal, small group, and large class. And another point of pride is at Fairview Public Library, we have language tables to help English second language students. In addition to our tweens and teens studying French and Spanish, they can come to the library and have some conversation time to work on those skills. So we're really proud about our staff that's able to offer those innovative programs. As far as community building, we have offered community meeting space to 358 community organizations. We have sponsored two author visits and 40 art exhibits. We also have had 1,173 study room sessions. These are the opportunities for our adult learners to come together and collaborate. They work on distance education, they work on adult computer college courses where they come together and do presentations, small group tutoring, PSAT classes, those sorts of things are happening. That's that 1,173. In addition to that, library has, the library staff has contributed to the community through participation in Paint Henry Blue, planning committees, communities and schools, parent expo, the Henry County Farmers Market, and numerous other community events. We have contributed to economic development through small business lunch and learns. I hope you're all aware of them. If not, stop by the McDonough Public Library today at 11 o'clock. It's a series of five classes taught, panel discussions with SCORE, the Small Business Development Center out of Clayton State University, and sponsored by the Henry County Development Authority. It covers the five fundamental skills needed for our small businesses to be up, running, and successful. It covers foundations, finance, operations, marketing, and human resources. Today, we're going to focus on how to finance a small business, how to know that you are financially sound enough to build or expand, and we're really excited about the support that we're offering in conjunction with these. We also offer resume and small, and job search assistance through in-house individual assistance. There are small classes at Fairview Public Library. Each one of the libraries has hosted the Atlanta Regional Workforce Board's Mobile Career Unit, and we have also partnered with Connecting Henry's Inspire Job Training that they offer twice a year. Now, just a quick moment to toot our own horn a little bit about some notable achievements that the library has had. I don't know if you're aware, but this year we had the honor of having Tangela McGibbons, the branch manager for Fortson Public Library, selected as the 2014 GLA Para Professional Grant recipient. That means that she was one of only four para professionals throughout the entire state of Ohio, in Ohio, Georgia. Oh my gosh, I went to my high school reunion this past weekend, so I have Ohio on the brain. It happens to all of us. We won't talk about what number that was. But having said that, it's very important to recognize that she was recognized out of not only public libraries, but also academic libraries, special libraries, private collections, those sorts of things. So she was one of four out of all para professionals. In addition to that, we have received grants from the EMC to cover nooks. I don't know if you've seen our nooks, we're very excited about them. They are preloaded over the summer, they were loaded with the required summer reading for all of our high school students, and now they are loaded with our Reading Bowl books. So kids can come, those are the high demand things, it's hard to get your hands on. They can come, they can check them out, they get about 10 on each nook, they can read through them and get through their work quickly and efficiently. We're very excited about that. We also had support from EMC for Library Goes to Camp, which continued throughout the summer. We received a grant from Target to support our 2015 summer reading program, so we've already started work on that, and we're excited about that. We've went through a major change to our labeling system, which required a little bit of upfront investment, but will save us money over the long term.
This is for books?
Yes, for books, labeling the books. And we have a reignited Friends of the Library group here in Henry County that meets the fourth Sunday of every month at 2:00, and we're really excited about that, they've been helping us out. Of course, this wouldn't be complete without sharing our challenges, which is aging technology. It's very difficult to keep our patrons able to complete the job search effectively, construct resumes, things like that, when they're waiting for the computer to catch up with them. We have continued to combat this with an MMR grant from the state and training support from some local businesses that really helped us out, and we appreciate that. Of course, our limited hours, we're working to overcome. Currently, we offer the 24/7 free Wi-Fi and online resources, but frequently people need research assistance from a person, and of course, that's a challenge that we have. And of course, we're still looking at being short-staffed. Library staffing recommendations for the state are .5 staff members per 1,000 residents, and that's to offer the hands-on assistance. That translates to 105 minimum recommended, and right now, we have 51, so we're a little overtaxed. And the maintenance of our buildings, we're very proud of our buildings, we are extremely proud of our buildings. We have five of the newest, we're one of the only systems, I think we are the only system in the state of Georgia that has these new showcase buildings, and we want to make sure that we're taking care of them. So in summary, we certainly, on the fly, in summary, Henry County Library System continues to maintain highly skilled staff to assist our community in advancing education, culture, and economic initiatives. We're grateful for the support of our friends, local media, of course, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Education, and our community stakeholders. I think that that's what's driven us to success over this first quarter, and we hope to carry it through. Do you have any questions? Concerns, comments?
I don't have any. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I hope to see you all at the lunch and learns.
And Mr. Oletta is going to be part of the panel today at the lunch and learn, and some of you may get calls from Jennifer to participate in the lunch and learn. So if you get a call from her, these happen once a month?
Yes, the first Tuesday of every month.
First Tuesday of every month, and if you get a call to come participate, or just come and sit in on them, but if you get a call to participate, we hope that you'll be able to do so.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a request from Sean Connors to address the board regarding a Talem home issued regarding trashpits. Second call for Mr. and Mrs. Connor. Okay, I see no one rising for the event. Next, we have one public comment, Bill Tony, if you would, come to the podium and give your name and address, you have five minutes, and it says your remarks from the county manager and FOIA fees.
Okay, Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonough. I was here last meeting, and I had an appointment, I had to go after I left here, so I had to leave early. And at the last, county manager, I felt like, kind of attacked me and said a lot of things I think were not right. I'd like to kind of set the record straight a little bit. Every citizen, taxpaying citizen, has the right, the freedom of information, and Sunshine, Sunshine Act, to know and be able to ask the government officials what they do with their money. They have the, they have the right to find out what's going on. You have the right to emails, you have the right to ask questions, you have the rights to do a lot of things. You, as a whole, work for the people of the county, and hopefully y'all respect the rights of the people from the county. Mr. Walker stated that I was a, and I don't, I can't remember his exact words were, that I was kind of like a drain on the county, asking for emails and everything, and I had asked for thousands of emails. Well, that's true, very true. What he didn't tell you was that they're charging me almost $50 an hour for those emails. And I have the right to them, I paid my money, just like a citizen should have. I asked if I could get some fees waived, it was turned down, just simply because Mr. Walker said no. All right, to me, he works for the, for the people, I am the people. I did say I was paying taxes on six houses in the county, I was wrong. I paid taxes on seven houses in the county, and I've never appealed a tax. I don't mind paying my taxes, that's what keeps the county going, and I believe that. I've been with the Freedom of Information. I've been cornered outside the building by Mr. Preston, telling me he's not done anything wrong. He had the right to charge me his full fees for anything I needed from his, from his cellphone, which was used in the county business. To me, that was wrong. It's like a high school bully, bullying somebody, and it wasn't right. He apologized to me for it later, and I accept his apology. But I just wanted to set the record straight today, that I am not, I'm not wanting to be a burden on the county, but I do have rights, and I do want to know what goes on with my tax dollars, as every citizen should know what goes on, and they should be able to ask you, and when they ask you an opinion, or what you think about something, I feel like you should give them an answer, not just, this, I've got my opinion. I hope, Gary, if you win, I hope you, you start looking at a lot of things with open mind, and you, you do a good job for us. You're my commissioners, like I said, both my commissioners. I really hope that y'all really dig down and figure out what's best for the county, and kind of go along with people. In my world, in the business world, you know, we have to make some tough decisions, and those tough decisions, you know, you have to do it. And I understand that as a citizen, and I really appreciate y'all's time. Thank you very much.
That's the only one I'm showing, asked to speak for the five minutes. Consent agenda, the following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Note before voting on the consent agenda, the chair will provide opportunity to add or delete these items. The first one is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing speed humps to be installed within the summerly subdivision. Second one is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to accept a grant for $70,000 from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council. The third one is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the acceptance of the Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of $55,200 for our heat program. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners to accept $4,237 donation from the Willett Foundation for the Henry County Police Department. A resolution allowing Henry County Juvenile Court to apply for a grant in the amount of $100,000 from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council for purpose of implementing an evidence-based prevention program for low-risk defenders. Next is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners granting approval for the Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court to apply for supplemental grants from the state of Georgia Office of Governor Criminal Justice Coordination for the fiscal year 2015. Before I ask the board to move on a consent, do we have any of these people that's donating money here, would like to be a picture taken at the end of this, like Willetts or anybody donating? Okay, if not, I would ask the board to consider to approve the consent agenda items as resolutions that I've just read.
So move.
Have a motion District 3.
Second.
Have a second from District 5. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so Public Works, purchase order approval to E.R. Snell, Inc. for asphalt for the repair of Peaksville Road. Terry McMichael, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board. During the grading and paving of the dirt section of New Hope Ri, New Hope Road, which was a SPLUS III project, a section of Peaksville was torn up by trucks delivering the rock and asphalt to the project. The base failed in this section due to the wet time of the year it was and the combined truck traffic. Full-depth reclamation was chosen to repair this base, and then to follow was a two-inch overlay of asphalt. The asphalt cost is estimated at approximately $40,000. Since this is over the $10,000 limit, it requires board approval. Our DOT is seeking approval of a purchase order in the amount of $40,000 to E.R. Snell Contractors for the purchase of asphalt to repair this section of Peaksville Road. This asphalt will utilize an existing annual contract for the purchase of that asphalt.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, purchase order approving for $40,000 to E.R. Snell Contract Incorporated for asphalt for the repair of Peaksville Road. Have a motion District 1.
Second.
Second, District 2. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. You have the next one, to award a bid for recycled material collected at the Henry County Recycling Facility.
Henry County Recycle Center continues to provide a free recycling program to the residents of Henry County. The time has come for the department to rebid the following recyclables to be purchased from the center. This proposal was processed through the purchasing department, the bid documents were posted on the county website, and the bid notice was listed at the ACCG website. Five vendors submitted bids for the materials, and a spreadsheet is attached for price comparison. The recycle center recommends award to five vendors as follows. Integrated Waste Solutions, we recommend they be awarded scrap metal, and then our plastics, which are the number ones and number twos. To Pratt Recycling, we recommend that they be awarded the office paper and newspaper, books, and cardboard. To Pharma Oil Company Incorporated, we ask that they be awarded the motor oil, and that will be picked up not only at the recycle center, but also at our fleet. And then scrap metal processors, we recommend award to scrap metal processors for batteries, aluminum, and electronics. I might add, there was additional categories that there was no bidders on, such as glass, cooking oil, antifreeze, or plastics. Two of these categories, we would like to continue using the vendors that are, who are already purchasing those, which is the glass and the cooking oil. We didn't have anybody to accept or give us a price on antifreeze, so we won't take that. Or plastics, which includes the numbers three, four, five, six, and seven, so we'll not be able to accept any of those plastics at the recycle center, since nobody is purchasing those from us. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Anybody have any questions? No, we have a resolution in the book to award bids for recycled materials collected at the Henry County Recycling Facility.
Salute.
Have a motion District 4, second District 3. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman, Board.
Next, we have a SPLUS Transportation Resolution approving a change order for design services for Lester Mill Road. Mr. Romero, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. Lester Mill Road is a designated SPLUS III transportation project. Additional engineering work by AECOM, our engineering firm, in the amount of $15,000 is needed due to the Henry County Water Authority minimum cover requirements over existing water lines. SPLUS and AECOM have been coordinating with the Henry County Water Authority regularly for over two years. However, Henry County Water Authority requirements to have a minimum of five feet of cover over their pressurized water lines and protection of their PVC paths buried 10 feet or greater was not mentioned until September of 2014. These requirements resulting in additional design changes for Henry County Water Authority will significantly impact the final design plans for Lester Mill Road. Based on comments received in September 2014 from Henry County Water Authority, the likelihood that there will be multiple back and forth submissions and counter revisions with Henry County Water Authority, AECOM is requesting additional funding to complete this work. It is anticipated that the redesign to maximize clearance from the Henry County water lines will require review and adjustments of horizontal and vertical alignments, ditches, shoulder modifications, recalculation of capacity for some of the cross drains and ditches, construction limits, adjustments, and subsequently, changes to our roadway plans and easements that have already been designed. Funding for design services is available in our SPLUS III Lester Mill Road project account.
Anybody else have any questions? No, we have a resolution in the book. Before moving this direction, I noticed that the approval sheet only carries your signature for the red file, does that, has staff in?
We have, Chairman, we both, both-
Go ahead, say it now.
Yes, we reviewed this one in our red folder meeting, and-
There was a matter of change that I had to do, and that's why-
I think there were some typographical errors on it, and maybe we just didn't get circulated back.
We have a motion to approve, the resolution is published in the book by District 2, second by District 5. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, motion, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Next, resolution approving the engineering design for the widening of West Panola Road. Rocky.
Yes, Chairman, SPLUS IV was approved by the voters in November of 2013. The widening of West Panola is a designated SPLUS IV Priority One project for calendar year 2014. The purchasing department issued a request for proposals, RFP number 14-34SP. Eleven proposals were received and reviewed by committee of Henry County Planning and Engineering Staff Professionals. The committee reviewed all submitted proposals, and all proposals were scored and ranked. The committee shortlisted and interviewed the top two firms. McGee Partners, Inc. provided the fee, a fee, for the design of the widening of West Panola Road in the amount of $378,900. The fee included design work in Clayton County in approximately amount of $80,000, and the design in Henry County in the amount of $298,900, for a total of $378,900. Clayton County is currently under construction on Panola Road, starting 900 feet west of our county line, 2I675, as a four-lane divided highway. An intergovernmental agreement with Clayton County is needed in order to receive reimbursement for work done outside Henry County. Per Finance Department, funding for the engineering services is available in the budget under SPLUS IV Priority One projects for calendar year 2014. Staff recommends approval of the engineering design services for the widening of West Panola Road to McGee Partners, Inc. in the amount of $378,900.
Anybody have any questions for Rocky? If not, we have a resolution in the book, resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners approving engineering design for widening of West Panola Road. Have a motion District 5, second District 1. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, before Rocky, ladies and gentlemen, may I?
Yes, sir.
Rocky, on East Lake Drive at Union Grove Middle School-
Correct.
Approximately five or six months ago, we passed a resolution to go ahead and add a turn-in lane there. Traffic backs up now past Elliott Road. If we had that turn-in lane, it wouldn't get stopped every time- If we had that turn-in lane, it wouldn't get stopped every time one car wants to turn and five cars want to keep going.
Yes sir.
Can you give me any idea as to when we might do something with it?
Yes sir, I met with Alan Gimran, he works for the Board of Education about two weeks ago regarding this issue. And actually, we're going to meet with our engineer that started the design a few years ago, this coming, well actually tomorrow at two o'clock, to see what we have, can we go ahead and with what the design that we have, can we go ahead and put it out for bid? Really, it's only going to impact two property owners, two parcels, so acquisition is not going to be, it won't take a long time. So we do, we are looking into it, there is some additional area that we were showing guardrail. Well, that's one of the things I'm going to be looking later today to see if we can eliminate the guardrail and, which will be, is proposed across the street from the elementary school. So I'm going to look at that today as well. So when we meet with the engineer firm tomorrow, we can go ahead and proceed with finalizing those plans.
Thank you. The Smith family owns one portion of that and the elder passed away, I think a year ago. The family actually lives in Florida, they may be a little difficult to get in touch with, but should you need it, I have a way to get in touch with them.
Okay, I will get that information from you sir.
You know, the only other thing is what happens there is you get one car wanting to turn and the queue lane is filled and it stops the traffic and it gets further and further back seemingly every morning. This will at least release the ones that would like to go straight up to within, you know, fifteen cars or however many we can queue up in that one lane, so.
We're also going to include not only the main entrance for the middle school, but also we'll have a turning lane, a left turn turning lane where the bus loop goes to, so there'll be two, for two, two driveways where it's going to accommodate our turning lane.
It'll be a big help for citizens in that area, thank you.
Yes sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a public hearing, ULDC-am-14-03 ordinance to amend table two point zero three point zero three of Chapter Two, Zoning District, Section two point zero three point zero three, non-residential land use and based zoning district and adding section four point zero three point three two to Chapter Four, Site Design Standards, Section four point zero three point zero zero supplementary design standards for specified use in accordance with the section twelve point zero two point one one and twelve point zero three point zero zero of the Henry County Code of Unified Land Development Code regarding pawn shops. Yes sir Dante, good morning.
Good morning Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The current ULDC regulations for pawn shops are limited to table two point zero three zero three in Chapter Two, which simply permit pawn shops in the C-two general commercial zoning district, C-three highway commercial zoning district, and IAC interchange activity center. On August fifth, 2014, planning staff presented the, to the Board of Commissioners findings from our research of surrounding jurisdictions pertaining to pawn shops. Planning staff recommended an ordinance limiting the number of pawn shops to a per population number similar to surrounding jurisdictions. With this in mind, the Board of Commissioners asked staff to look into adding a lottery in similitude to surrounding local jurisdictions and implemented a ninety-day moratorium on pawn shops in unincorporated Henry County effective August fifth, 2014. This moratorium expired November second, which I believe was Sunday, this past Sunday. This allowed additional time for planning staff to amend, I'm sorry, to further research surrounding jurisdictions and make additional recommendations to amend the ULDC to regulate pawn shops. The surrounding jurisdictions that were researched included Clayton County, Cobb County, Cherokee County, Fayette County, the city of Morrow, the city of McDonough, and the city of Stockbridge. There are currently seven active pawn shops in unincorporated Henry County according to the business licensing department's records. According to the Atlanta Regional Commission, unincorporated Henry County has an estimated population of one hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-seven as of 2013. The number of pawn shops in unincorporated Henry County, if divided equally, each serve approximately twenty-one thousand one hundred eighty-two residents. If the following recommendation is adopted, unincorporated Henry County will be at its maximum number of allowable pawn shops, which will be seven, and cannot permit another pawn shop until the population is increased by another twenty-one thousand one hundred eighty-two residents. Planning staff recommends the following. Amending table two point zero three zero three in Chapter Two to designate pawn shops as supplemental. The new supplemental section of the ULDC will be section four dot zero three dot three two entitled Pawn Shops and will read as follows. Pawn shops are permissible in the following zoning districts, C-two general commercial, C-three highway commercial, and IAC interchange activity center and are subject to the supplemental standard set forth in this section. Number one, pawn shop licenses shall be limited to one per twenty-one thousand one hundred eighty-two population. Two, pawn shops shall not be within one thousand feet of a similar use. Three, no application for license to do business as a pawn shop shall be considered or approved or a license issued where the total number of pawn shop licenses issued and in effect at the time of such application numbers at least one for each twenty-one thousand one hundred eighty-two residents according to the latest officially and finally published annual population estimates by the Atlanta Regional Commission. If during this period, applications are received which exceed the number of newly available licenses, there shall be a held a lottery administered by the Henry County Business License Department to determine the order in which application shall be processed. Thereafter, the application shall be processed in the order reflected in the results of the lottery. Once the proceeding of applications has resulted in the issuance of licenses up to the limit contained in this chapter, the remaining application shall be returned to the applicant's unprocessed. The enforcement of the total number of pawn shops permitted in Henry County shall be maintained by the Henry County Business License Department in accordance with the processes outlined in the licenses and taxation requirements in Chapter Three dash three, Article Six of the Henry County Code of Ordinances. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, this constitutes a public hearing among, I'm sorry, a ULDC to the stingers general from District Four.
Dante, and looking, are there any other businesses in Henry County that are, that are allowed in or not allowed in by population?
At this time, no sir.
So we're creating something new?
Not, if you look at the surrounding jurisdictions, it's not necessarily something new. It will be new to our ordinance, our ULDC, but it's something that has been adopted by other local jurisdictions, Stockbridge being one, McDonough being another. So technically, it's nothing new per se, but to Henry County, it would be new to our ULDC.
Is there, what is the, what's the issue involving pawn shop? I don't, I don't own a pawn shop, don't really know anything about them, been in a few, trying to find some of my tools that somebody may have gotten rid of, but, other than that, I don't, you know, I don't frequent them very often. I have one particular one I go to because they have older guns at certain times and I go in there and take a look at those, but what is, what's the, what's the issue with a pawn shop as opposed to a nail parlor? I mean, because there's a nail parlor in every strip center.
There was more so a concern expressed with the type of crowd that certain pawn shops in certain areas attract and how that will negatively, potentially negatively affect the surrounding community. That was the, the concern expressed and actually was spearheaded by, if I may say, Commissioner Holmes of District Five. Looking at Clayton County as an example, they have thirty-six pawn shops and there have been a number of issues in the news and newspaper associated with, and not to just hone in and just call out the pawn shops, but that's, that's the concern that kind of spurred the research and the requesting of staff to look into it.
So what we're saying as a group is that we don't, we don't want pawn shops, basically. I mean, we're not really to the extent of twenty-three thousand, it's a little hard for me to figure out how you're going to figure the twenty-three thousand when Ed's is right there and then if you go within a mile, there's another one right there on the right in that center and are they both going to share that twenty-three thousand because it's only like twenty-six thousand in the city? It seems like we, we, I'm going to hold you for a second.
Sure.
Could you defend that?
I, I think so. You know, there's, there are a few other industries that are often regulated in the same way, same way by local governments. A lot of times you'll see package stores regulated by population. Sometimes you'll see some service type industries regulated that way. We don't have any here in Henry County. It's a, it's, it's a, it's probably an effective way to reduce the number of pawn shops and I guess ultimately the board's got to make a decision is, is this an industry you want to take a stand on? Is the, are these numbers of pawn shops, is that the number you want to take the stand on? But no, I do think it's defensible, I think there's a legitimate basis for it. I, I, I understand what you're saying, I mean, pawn shop's in the eye of the beholder. You know, there's, there's some jewelry stores that technically are pawn shops because they buy other jewelry and they consign it and they sell it. I don't know if there's any in the county, I know there's some in some of the cities, but those, there's always unintended consequences, I haven't thought through all of them, but yeah, I do think it's defensible.
I'm just a little concerned anytime we start trying to regula, I mean, I don't, now I don't have an issue with this one, I just want to know more about it before my hand goes in there. You know, I want to know, okay, what's, what, what are some of the unintended consequences? What, what kind of slope are we going down? And what will be next? You know, what's the next thing we're going to say? No buy here, pay here car lots. You know, they're not the best thing in the world either. I mean, there's, it, it just seems like that we can expand and I'm really probably more for less government than I am for more government, but, but on the, on the side of that, I mean, I, I appreciate it and I wasn't, those questions, I did not know the answer to. Most of the time, I may know the answer before I ask it, but this one I didn't because it intrigued me that we would try to do that. One more question, Mr. Chair.
Yes sir.
Does our, does our action preclude any city from allowing a pawn shop in their city? Hampton, Locust Grove, McDonough, or Stockbridge?
Would you like to answer this?
We don't have authority to regulate those things inside the city limits. So if one of the cities wants to load up with pawn shops, there's nothing we can do about that.
So the city, and therefore, you know, somebody being on the skirt, and I'm just throwing this out, this is one of these unintended consequences. John Doe's back property line touches the city limit. He wants to do a pawn shop, so he can ask to be annexed into the city, if the city takes him, he's got his pawn shop? I mean, I just, just a thought, that's not necessarily how it would go, but we've seen that sort of thing happen in the past with other zonings, not so much with this, but other zonings. I, I just thought it would make sense for at least to have a conversation about it.
Yes sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? If not, I'm on open floor for fifteen minutes, anybody like to speak for or against this proposed ordinance change? State your name and the record and address for the record place.
My name is Elton Alexander, nine twenty Maple Leaf Drive, McDonough, Georgia, and I would like to speak on behalf of Because We Care, Henry County and our followers. And I would like to strongly urge the board to consider this ordinance, passing this ordinance, and to even go further with Cash For Gold and Title Ponds and those types of establishments. To speak to your concern, understanding the issue, there's been overwhelming support for this because the pawn, the pawn shops that we're seeing are undesirable businesses in our community and there's a great deal of concern about the effect on property values. I know just looking at the exit where I am, Jodaco, we have a Cash For Gold with a truck parked outside the building with Cash For Gold on it, right at an exit, probably discouraging other businesses from locating there. And then right down on Highway forty-two at Jodaco, we have another Cash For Gold business locating in that area. It discourages residents and it's, we're trying to improve that area. As a resident in the Jodaco area, I'd like to see that corridor improved, but when you have undesirable type businesses in that location and as a homeowner, that has an effect on what, you know, when I potentially want to sell my, sell my, sell my property. It is expressed that, you know, these types of businesses are adding to that undesirable, undesirable type of business in the area. And including in that is that we're seeing these businesses add things like the LED lights in their windows and that types of things which basically give a undesirable appearance for the neighborhood and for the community in general. Generally, we have seen and heard concern about these pawn shops attracting additional crime to the area because, you know, we see those as, sometimes those individuals, industrial circumstances uses those locations to fence it, what type of precautions are they putting in place to prevent that from happening? And, you know, we just, as a community, you know, it is expressed, one of the comments that was made was that this is sometimes considered one of the first signs of a decaying community. Is when you start to see pawn shops, title ponds, Cash For Gold start to pop up on each and every corner, then that is seen as one of the signs that the community is on, on the slide and that things are starting to go awry in this particular community and we don't want to be seen in that designation. And we see that far too often with these types of businesses and the types of clientele that they have coming in. I'm not saying that all pawn shops do this, but, you know, the ones that we are seeing, they're not the most, they're not being, a lot of them aren't being maintained and then the appearance in the community and just the overall negative type of concerns that are being expressed over and over by those. Each and every time I post this to our page, we have eight thousand followers now, now does everybody agree on it? No, but every time I post this down, people come on immediately saying, wow, I see it, they see it in their communities, they want it stopped, they want it stopped. And they're calling upon you to do that and I think that this is a good recommendation and this is a good start. As far as that conversation goes, the conversation generally goes like this. The only concern that I've heard is actually raising the population number to limit it even more, not less. So that is the only concern, not, nothing negative about eliminating pawn shops from the particular, from our particular community. But I just want to close by saying, please, this is what we need in the community, we take pride in our community and we want to see these, these types of undesirable businesses limited. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard for or against this proposed ordinance change? If not, any commissioner has any further questions? Okay, I'm going to conclude that the public hearing has, yes sir.
I appreciate the Commissioner Bowman's comments and I appreciate Elton's comments too. The thing that I think about when I see stuff like this and I have no issue with it, but it's more of a statement on that pawn shops, as Mr. Alexander mentioned, can be the first indicator, but that's just a symptom that the community's having issues. And so by us doing this limitation, all we're doing is treating the symptoms. It doesn't impact the underlying cause of why does this type of stuff happen? The reason is, is we've got to have economic development in the community and that's why I just want to make sure the public knows that we don't look at this as the solution, this is just something to help protect us from the symptoms that sometimes can happen if our community is struggling and then it's up to us commissioners to make sure we keep the eye on the ball to attract as much opportunity as possible to our community, try to get business owners out there, even try to get landowners, large landowners, to think bigger than maybe they had thought for that land and how we can encourage it. And that's why I want the public to know that we're going to work hard to continue to try to push economic development because that's ultimately how you cure these type of businesses that maybe aren't as desirable in your areas by lifting up the, the quality of life, the, the economic development of the area. But I do think that these are good measures though in the fact of, you know, it's no different than as, as, as our county attorney said, you see this with package stores and other things, just to make sure that we're. package stores and other things, just to, to make sure that we're, we're keeping tabs on, on where things are.
Anybody else have any comments? Just for record, I vote no because I think it interferes with, uh, free enterprise. Uh, is Tattoo Paul is going to be next, just like Commissioner Bowman said, uh, if, if we start with one and if the community doesn't like Dollar General stores and a, uh, a legal environment, then where, where do we start? But that's just my comment, so. Unless another commissioner has any comments, we have a resolution, it's not a resolution, ordinance to amend a table, and I'm not going to read all these numbers, one I'd read previously. So we have an ordinance that would, uh, make all this happen if somebody moved in that direction.
So move.
We have motion District Five.
I'll second it.
Second District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign? Okay. Uh, the, the motion has been defeated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, next, we have a public, public hearing. ULDC dash AM fourteen dash oh one, American Towers LLC of Woolburn, Massachusetts, uh, in care of Ms. Smith Holt-Ney, uh, Atlanta, request an amendment to the United Land Development Code, Chapter Seven, Standards for Accessories and Temporary Uses, Section seven point zero five dash oh zero Wireless Communication Facilities, in accordance with Section twelve point oh two da, point one one and twelve point zero three point oh oh of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. Dante, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting a text amendment to the Unified Land Development Code, Wireless Communication Facility, Section Seven, the Nonconforming Structures, Section Eleven, Requirements for Permitting, Section Twelve, and respective technical definitions in Appendix A. The purpose of the applicant's request to amend the ULDC is to facilitate and expedite approval process for the replacement of existing wireless communication facilities in certain limited circumstances. In this particular case, the landowner is not willing to renew the long-term lease which places the existing cell tower owner, American Tower, in a limited circumstance in which they must find a new location to continue facilitating the service provided by the four carriers currently located on the existing towers. I'm sorry, tower. And those carriers are T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Clearwire, and Sprint. The ULDC currently has no provisions for an administrative approval process for replacing existing cell towers. In summary, the proposed amendment will require that replacement towers be located within eight hundred fifty feet of the existing tower, that future land use zoning designations of a new parcel locate, location be the same or more intense as the parcel on which the existing tower is located, that the new tower will be reduced in height by at least ten percent, that the new tower design will be a preferred design, for example, from lattice-style support structure to a monopole, that the exist, existing tower be removed within one hundred twenty days after, after the replacement tower construction is complete, and the new tower shall exceed the current ULDC Wireless Communications Facility setback requirements on all sides. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing nonconforming two hundred thirty-foot-tall self-support tower located at nineteen Holloway Road and replacing the existing wireless communication facility with a new one hundred ninety-nine foot monopole, which will include a four-foot lightning rod at the top. The proposed new location of the replacement tower is an undeveloped parcel located at seventy-seven Holloway Road, which is approximately five hundred fifteen linear feet away. With that being said, Georgia lawmakers passed legislation entitled House Bill one seventy-six that became effective July first, twenty fourteen pertaining to cell towers. The General Assembly found it necessary to enact the chapters of House Bill one seventy-six in Part Two, and I quote, "Ensure the, the ready availability of reliable wireless communication services to the public to support personal communications, economic development, and the general welfare," end quote. In addition to the parameters established by Georgia House Bill one seventy-six for local governing authorities, the site on which the placement, the replacement tower is proposed to be relocated will require land disturbance in order to clear the needed area for the pad on which the new structure will be constructed, constructed and must submit all required applications, documentation, development plans, and fees for development review to the Henry County Building Department. With regard to the applicant's request to remove the, uh, ULDC Wireless Communication Balloon Test, Section seven oh five oh eight C, in its entirety, uh, this supports a progressive incorporation of the advances in technology that allow for more efficient means to simulate topography in area structures. The proposed amendments to the Wireless Communication Facility Technical Terms in Appendix A are in context with the American Planning Association's Planner's Dictionary definitions. Lastly, the suggested sec, the suggested section and subsection classifications amendments in Section Twelve promote consistency in the collective numeric and alphabetical organization of the ULDC. With that being said, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the applicant's request to amend the ULDC Wireless Communications Facilities, Section-
If you have any comments or questions at this time? If not, this constitutes a, uh, public hearing. I will open the floor up to the public for 15 minutes, for or against, any comments?
Mr. Chair, prior to-
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the county attorney, uh, Patrick, I, I'm in the communications business. I don't do any work with American Tower. That doesn't necessarily mean anything. Should I recuse myself from this?
Then, no, if, if you have no business relationship with American Tower or no, uh, financial interest in the property subject to this application, then you don't have any conflict. If you're concerned about it, then you can always, you can always recuse yourself.
You know, the issue could be down the road. I could be doing more. Yeah, we're always working for different communications companies. I just didn't want to have a situation come up where in three months from now, I'm out of office and I get a call from someone from American Tower, uh, and we're looking at it. I'll make sure that-
My advice would be if your conscience is bringing that up, it may be best just to recuse yourself and avoid any, any appearance.
I think I probably should simply because at the end of the day, I, I, I work for a number of communications, Sprint, Verizon, AT&amp;T, others. I, I do some tower work and some other things, so, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself just a little.
Okay. Let the record indicates that, that Mr. Bowman, District Four, recused himself on this issue. Now, having said that, I'll open the floor up for public comments. If you would, come to the podium, state your name and address for the records, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. My name is Ellen Smith. I'm an attorney with Holt-Ney, Zach Coffin-Wasserman. It's a mouthful. Smith is much easier to remember. My address is one hundred Galeria Parkway Suite eighteen hundred, Atlanta, Georgia. I have the pleasure of representing American Tower with respect to this request, and I just want to be able to answer any questions you might have, but give you a little bit of background. We have, uh, been working on this ULDC amendment since January. In fact, I came down here and had a nice four-mile walk home when my car got stuck during snowpocalypse because that was our first meeting. Uh, so here we are on Election Day, and I'm giving my children the opportunity to learn a little bit more about the governmental process because Cobb County schools are closed for Election Day, and so they're joining me this morning, and I appreciate your indulgence in letting them sit through this. Um, this request is documented in our written materials and in the staff report that I know you all have in front of you. It includes an analysis of the four factors that you have to consider when considering a ULDC text amendment. Um, and I just wanted to say I appreciate the staff's careful analysis of this. Many of the changes that you'll see in the request actually aren't driven by American Towers but are driven just by seeking compliance with the Georgia law that changed, uh, in July and also the Federal Telecommunications Act. Um, the provisions specifically relating to the request and the issue that American Tower has are very small and they are to allow the replacement of an existing wireless structure in certain very limited circumstances. Those circumstances are intended to ensure that if there is a replacement of a wireless tower, that the carriers that are on that tower can continue to provide wireless coverage to the customers that they have, but also requires that tower to be shorter in height. It requires the tower, if it's a nonconforming tower and it's being replaced, to be shorter in height, to be a different design, so one that is more aesthetically pleasing than what might be there now, and to be consistent with the same zoning land use districts and future land use maps. So we're trying to ensure consistency and mitigate the impact of the wireless tower on area properties. Um, I'm happy to go through any other questions you may have, but primarily, this brings your ULDC into compliance with federal and state law, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I appreciate your consideration of this request. Thank you so much.
Anybody else like to be heard this time? Public hearing? I'm going to conclude. The public hearing has, uh, ended. And if the board has any more questions to anyone, now would be the time to answer it. If not, we have an ordinance in the book, an ordinance to amend ULDC Section seven point oh five as published. If somebody moved, we consider, up or down?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from District Two to approve. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. You can come back now, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we have a request authorization to amend the Police Department Fiscal Account by transferring funds from regular employee accounts to reallocated funds to specified accounts. Angie Soro, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Before you have a resolution to amend the Police Department's budget, they are asking to transfer funds from regular employee's salary account to specific accounts such as, um, uniform allowance, small equipment, general supplies, to purchase a canine dog, and, uh, to repair some buildings. The total amount of the amendment will be a hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, and as of right now, they have twenty vacancies. So I'm asking to approve this budget amendment.
Anybody have any questions, comments? If not, have a resolution in the book. Board of Commissioners authorized the Henry County Police Department to reallocate funds for the regular employee accounts to various operational accounts.
So move.
We have a motion, District Four, Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, County Manager, we have a budget amendment to fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Angie.
Good morning, Ellen. Um, before you have the, um, a resolution to amend fiscal year thirteen, fourteen year-end budget, as you know, that the budget needs to be amended periodically, and what this is doing is to clean up any variances that we've had throughout the year. Uh, it's just housekeeping for the year-end audit. Um, the general fund will be an increase of four hundred thousand, four oh three. The law library fund will be an increase of twenty-five thousand, one twelve. The NSP fund will be an increase of three million, two sixty-eight, three twelve. NSP, uh, three, increase of five hundred thousand, six hundred sixty-six thousand. CDBG is a decrease of three hundred fourteen thousand. The confiscated asset is an increase of three million, thirty-two thousand, five thirty-six. Nine one one is an increase of six hundred, nine hundred twenty-five thousand. Uh, general fund, uh, again, is one point two six five. Special court revenues is an increase of six hundred thirty-six thousand. Technology is an increase of twenty-seven thousand, five eighty-nine. Juvenile court is an increase of forty-nine thousand, two sixteen. Economic development is an increase of one hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred forty-seven thousand. Hotel motel, increase of forty-eight, eight fourteen. Henry First, increase of twenty-seven, one fifty-seven. Capital asset is an increase of one point eight oh five. Lease purchase increase is one hundred seventy thousand. Impact fee is a decrease of one point seven eight. Debt service increase of one point nine six seven, and increase of stormwater of twenty thousand, three sixteen. And the airport is a decrease of eight, eight eighty-one, eight hundred. And I'm asking to amend fiscal year fourteen budget by these amounts.
Anybody have any questions? I have several. One is the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget was a hundred and twenty-two million, oh seventy-eight, eight thirty-four.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, uh, in order to balance that budget, the board approved somewhere around three million dollars, uh, out of fund balance to make it balance.
Yes.
Now, in conversation with you, I understand that, uh, the fund balance has been replaced. Okay, so we, uh, collected one million, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and six hundred and eighteen dollars above the hundred and twenty-two million plus amount. Okay, if that's the case, fund balance has been replaced. So that means we've got an excess of one point nine eight two six one eight, last year's budget.
Yes.
Now, what I would like to do is, we, we fixing to build some fire stations that we know we probably can't fund, is to get the board to consider, not at this meeting, to allocate these funds to, to go towards, uh, set aside, at least for this right here, we can buy, uh, uh, almost a year and a half of staff for one fire station in one year. And I think District Two, uh, is having some difficulties and District Four is, is I would like, and this is food for thought, and I think, obviously, we've got to approve this, and I'm going to vote in favor of moving this, but just food for thought, uh, I, I would like to let the board consider taking that and, and putting it to something we know is down the road. We, we, we borrowed money, or gone borrow money, to build the fire stations. Uh, we, we bonded money, so by the time we get through, uh, this right here would ensure. I know we've got other possibilities, uh, the tax increase i- in assessments are going to go up my list, but this right here would be, be locked in. But that's just my thought. Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to give a, a compliment. I think a, a lot of times in, especially in governmental accounting-type things, you see people, the, the stereotype is you budget an amount of money, and then you see people, how often have we heard about in other jurisdictions? I'm not going to say who they are because we, you've seen the nightly news, just like I have, where they find a warehouse where they've gone and loaded up a bunch of equipment just so they could spend their budgets, so they could get the same budget next year. You see that in government, that's the stereotype. We actually have a county that we budgeted what we thought we needed, but I think this is probably the second year this has happened for sure, where expenditures come in less. Now, revenue's up also, but it's a combination of we've incurred more revenue, but then expenditures were less because our staff is trying to be as efficient with the gov, with the, the public's money as possible, so we can do exactly, because I, I think, I think the, probably the more appropriate thing to do is we know we're opening that fire station. We said in the last SPOLOST discussions, we've said in everything else, public safety is a priority for Henry County, and that's why we looked at it as countywide projects versus going into each district. So I know those expenditures, just like the chairman said, will be in next year's budget, but it, I just feel much more comfortable as a commissioner because y'all let it come to us to help set the budget with your help, with staff's help, and let the public see that it's as transparent as possible instead of the finagling that goes on behind the scenes where departments try to spend every dime for the sake of trying to get the same amount. It's very selfless, but it's also a very commendable action by our staff, and I just want to let the departments know. I appreciate it. I mean, from an accounting standpoint, when I was going through this, I was like, how great is it that our community spends less than we budgeted them, and they're honest with us? And, and, and we see it in the savings, and I'm hoping that it pays back to the public in the fact that we're going to continue to do what we need to for our staff to get them that, 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 that compressed need that's been pushed back when we had the downturn. But I'm also thinking that the public's going to get a dividend out of this, too, is that we, we take care of our staff for being honest and good, but then we're also going to hopefully get that mileage down a little bit in next year's when we have that, that increase in revenue. But thank you, staff and department heads, for doing everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, you have a resolution in the book, whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners adopt the fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty fourteen budget on May the twenty-first, uh, twenty thirteen, and whereas, and it lists all the items that you just mentioned publicly, and that will be part of the record. If somebody moved, will we accept this, approve this?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District, uh, Two.
Second.
Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, any of the commissioners have any comments they'd like to make at this time for any reason? The chair does not. Okay, County Manager, do you like to make any comments?
No, sir.
Did we, did you do the amended items that you have?
No, sir.
Okay.
You ready for this? Next, the County Man, County Attorney's comments, he has two condemnations.
Perfect.
Yes. So I will relinquish the floor to County Manager.
County Attorney, you promoted me. I don't, I don't want that job. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two resolutions, and I'll touch briefly on them. Harris Road is in District Two, District One, I'm sorry, and Sploost is, one of those transportation projects involves a widening of Harris Road. We've acquired almost all of the right-of-way. We've got this one parcel that we're just unable to negotiate a purchase with from the property owner, and we have a resolution before you to authorize us to proceed with condemnation if, if our continued efforts are unsuccessful. That is the resolution titled Resolution to Authorize Acquisition of Ninety-two-hundred-and-ten square feet of land. We're, we're going to acquire ninety-two-hundred square feet of land, about six hundred feet of a permanent- of a permanent easement, and eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-two feet of a temporary easement to allow us to construct Harris Road. And I'd ask that you approve the resolution so we can proceed with acquisition. Obviously, we can't build the road till we acquire all the right-of-way.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a res, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's in District One, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
District One. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of nine thousand two hundred and ten square feet of land, more or less, six hundred and thirty-eight square feet of permanent construction easement, more or less, and one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two square feet of temporary easement, more or less, Land Lot two fifty-one of the second, the second district, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pertinent to the provision of OCGA Section thirty-two dash three dash four through Section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen. If somebody moved to approve this? Have a motion District Three, Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move.
Now with Georgia Three.
The next one is Old Highway Number Three. Likewise, we have a road improvement project on Old Highway Three. We're acquiring, this one is almost two, is seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventeen square feet of land. It's a long, long strip along this property owner's frontage, about thirty feet deep, and we need to acquire seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventeen square feet of right-of-way to accomplish construction of the road. Old Highway Number Three is in District Two.
Anybody got any questions? This is in District Two. Resolution to authorize acquisition of seven thousand eight hundred seventeen square feet of land, more or less, in Land Lot one eighty-five, one eighty-six of the sixth district, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pertinent to provision of the OCGA Section thirty-two dash three dash four through Section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen. If somebody moved in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two.
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Upcoming meetings and holidays, Tuesday, November the eighteenth at six thirty PM, will be a regular meeting, Thursday and Friday, November the twenty-seventh, and the twenty-eighth will be a holiday for the county employees, and I suggest that the county commissioners take that, them two days off, too, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Tuesday, December the second, at nine o'clock AM, is a regular board meeting. Tuesday, December the sixteenth, at six thirty PM, is a regular meeting. Thursday and Friday, December the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, Christmas holidays. Somebody moved, we adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion? All raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Be sure to go to vote. That's it. That's all. Music.